Okay. 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 Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Sorry for the little delay. We're going to go ahead and call to order this special session of the Bloomington City Council. And we're gonna go with the pledge of allegiance. And we'll ask everyone to remain standing if able to, and then for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kearns, here. Councilmember Boland, here. Councilmember Montney, here. Councilmember Danenberger, here. Councilmember Hendricks, here. Councilmember Ward, here. Councilmember Lee, here. Councilmember Crumpler, here. Mayor Millamblay, here.
And seeing that we do not have recognitions or appointments, we're gonna move on to public comment.
Mayor, we need to have a motion to allow Councilmember Becker to attend remotely.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Hendricks and seconded by Councilmember Danenberger. Roll call.
Councilmember Kearns, yes. Councilmember Bowman, yes. Councilmember Montney, yes. Councilmember Danenberger, yes. Councilmember Hendricks, yes. Councilmember Ward, aye. Councilmember Lee, yes. Councilmember Crumpler, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Becker, are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. So, moving on to public comment, Madam Clerk.
We have one emailed public comment from William Gustafson. We have one virtual public comment and two in-person public comments.
Okay. A public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Okay?
We're gonna start with our virtual public comment with William Gustafson.
Yes, can you hear okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, if you could be a little louder, I think that might be helpful.
Okay, tell me, this is William Gustafson, G-U-S-T-A-V-S-O-N. Born and raised here since 1948. Glad to be a part of Bloomington, but I'd rather be part of Bloomington Grove. But anyway, that's a story of a different time. Uh, boy, I'd like to say, I'd like to come to you with a $500,000 check to be used for new native trees to be purchased and planted in front of everybody's house in Bloomington Normal, in Bloomington. Uh, I can't do that myself, but the city, uh, if we educated people to rake the leaves out of the street and be used on the property as mulch, et cetera, for the benefit of the trees, uh, the city could probably save possibly that amount. And I'm throwing out $500,000. Uh, somebody gave me that, that to me about 10 years ago, about what the leaf pickup vacuuming program costs annually. So again, this could be a fundraising, F-U-N, fundraising project for kids and families, uh, to help the city of Bloomington with their ecological tree system. Uh, municipalities, municipalities in the long run, uh, they don't have a good record with, uh, street trees. For example, the Dutch Elms came and left and the Emerald Ash Bores, uh, took over the ash trees. And sadly, the Abraham Lincoln Memorial Tree, planted when Lincoln went from Washington to Springfield by the ISU Flagpole, has died under the care of ecologists, whoever, uh, planted the tree years ago at ISU. Anyway, that tree has succumbed because of improper care. So anyway, the point is, uh, the natives tree, all the trees in Bloomington Normal, they do have a immune system. And the immune system is being compromised every year by this subtraction process of people being allowed to put the leaves out to the street for the city vacuum cleaner to take them away to who knows where. So anyway, there's a couple of programs. One, the Morton Rar Baritum has a program and actually a local organization called, uh, Wild Ones in Bloomington had a program at the library called Leave the Leaves. So by leaving the leaves and mulching them with a lawnmower, using them close to where they came from is going to be most beneficial for the trees in the long run. And so, uh, sad, going back to the financial aspect again, if Bloomington, uh, was able to save $500,000 and spend $400,000 each fall planting more trees, putting $1,000 into investment, if you multiply that past the last 10 years, last 20 years, oh boy, we've been, we've been, uh, burning a lot of money up in smoke, hauling the leaves away and possibly, uh, compromise again the immune system of the trees by hauling them away.
Okay.
So anyway, my point is if-
Your three minutes are up, sorry, William.
Okay, let's educate our public, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next.
Next up, we have Thomas Joseph.
Think it's not on, it doesn't seem like it's on.
I'm good, okay. Good evening, everyone. So my name is Thomas Joseph. I moved to Bloomington 10 years ago and, uh, the primary reason was I lived in a city where housing was not affordable. And I moved to Bloomington because housing was affordable and good schools. I had a young family there, I was able to afford home and I also sent them to a good school. So I had a budget to how much I could afford a home, but that has, the loan has been fixed on the mortgage, but the, every year my property tax has increased so much that it has exceeded my budget. Now that is causing a lot of pressure on how much I can afford. The value, I think, is being assessed for someone and my neighbor coming and buying a 500,000 home. And he is coming with the money that he can afford. But I had a budget where my affordability was under 300,000, right? Because somebody can afford at 500,000, how is it making sense for my taxes also going into the same category, right? Because I had a budget when I bought, that is the amount I can afford. But if, if somebody is buying a 500,000 on the same street, he is able to afford that money and he is buying that home. Because of that cause, and if you're increasing the value of property tax, all the homeowners that are existing, then it is putting a lot of pressure on people who are already living there. I think the new developers who are building homes are building bigger homes and, and, and that prices are higher and then causes the existing home prices also go higher. So people moving in are paying more and that is putting a lot of pressure on people who are living there. So I think that's the reason why the property taxes are high in, in my street, based on what I read in the assessed value. So I think, I, I read the agenda today, you are talking about housing affordability and homelessness- So I think, I, I read the agenda today, you are talking about housing affordability and homelessness. If you don't address this middle-class family, which I consider us, it is going to push me into that category. And homelessness are moving into a, uh, into an apartment or things are, are entirely moved from this place. So this is a nice city, I think you have to control how much these prices are going high so that people can still continue to live this dream life here. Otherwise, it is not going to be possible for people who are in a middle-class category because the property tax has been increasing so high. Keep in mind that people, when they buy home, they are coming with a budget that they are thinking to, uh, live for ten, fifteen years. But this has been so high now for the last ten years. I can adjust for one few percentage, but now it has been so much, like it has been more than fifteen, thirty percent, at least from when I bought ten years ago from what I'm today. So, uh, I really appreciate this time, and but also please think about when you approve the new homes, try to budget, uh, consider the prices where they are currently existing, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next, we have Jackie Bayer.
All right, good evening, my name is Jackie Bayer. First, I want to recognize Scott Rathbun and his team for the excellent job they always do, putting together and presenting exhibits. I may not like what is on those exhibits, but I appreciate the hard work that goes into them. Speaking of not liking what is on the exhibits, a property tax dollar increase of more than seventeen percent is proposed tonight. Keeping the tax rate flat will already capture the full amount of the nine point eight four percent EAV increase, which increases the levy, increases people's property tax bills, and increases city revenue. I don't know a single person in this room who is against funding the police and fire pensions and fulfilling the resolution to have the pensions fully funded by twenty forty. One of the biggest arguments for keeping the levy flat last year was because there are other sources within the budget available to contribute to the pension obligation. The city proved that to be true by using funds from the general funds to cover the property tax source shortfall. In the agenda item packet, it states city code authorizes the tax levy and utility taxes as funding sources. Does the city code prohibit funding sources from other areas of the budget? Does the code not allow funding from the general fund? Are there any municipal accounting rules, standards, or best practices that prohibit public safety pensions funding from other areas of the budget? If the city insists that the property taxes and utility taxes be the sole source of public safety pension funding, then what is preventing the city to find other sources of funding to pay for the other property tax components? Move out general corporate, I M R F, public parks, and social security. In the past several years, it seems like the public safety pensions have been used to hold city council hostage unless they increase the levy. And if they vote against a levy increase, they are accused of being anti-police and fire. The bottom line, though, is that the city council approved the entire budget, which included the needed funding for fire and police pension. That is one hundred percent in support of the public safety pensions regardless of source. A couple of quick items, does this budget reflect the four point, or forty-one point two percent increase in water tax revenue expected by fiscal year twenty twenty-seven because of the increase in water rates? I'm going to assume that there is a high probability the city will approve a local grocery tax to replace the state tax consistent with normal. I don't know how the cash flow works, uh, but would that include savings of the state processing fee that was charged when this, when it was a state tax and then allocated to the municipalities? I could be wrong, but wasn't the processing fee about four hundred thousand dollars for the city? Lastly, for the "It's Just a Cup of Coffee" crowd, a nine-dollar increase is seven cans of SpaghettiOs with meatballs or fourteen servings. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment we have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. And we do not have any items on the consent agenda, so we're gonna move to the regular agenda with item A, a presentation of, on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine Community Development Block Rent Consolidated Plan Outreach Efforts and Preliminary Goals as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And I'm gonna pass it directly to Melissa Hahn for, and William for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager, uh, for allowing us the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the twenty twenty-five, twenty-nine C D B G Consolidated Plan Outreach Priority Rankings and Preliminary Goals. I'd first like to start and just give a shout-out to William, um, and his team have done such an excellent job on pulling this all together for, for the consolidated plan. Um, next slide, please. So as you are aware, the city of Bloomington is an entitlement community, which means that we receive funds annually from housing and urban development. Um, it is based on a formula, um, where they determine the amount that we receive. The formula of funding, uh, they look at things such as extent of poverty, population, housing overcrowding, age of housing, population growth lag, and relationship to other metro areas. All of the activities that we fund using the C D B G funding must meet a national objective, and those include benefits to low to moderate income persons, prevention or elimination of slum and blight conditions, and to meet urgent community needs. Next slide, please. So what is the consolidated plan? The consolidated plan serves as our roadmap for the next five years and determines how the goals and spending priorities will be set for the funding. The consolidated plan for the city of Bloomington is a joint effort with McLean County Regional Planning and the Town of Normal. Next slide, please. So the first step was for the city of Bloomington and the Town of Normal to review and revise the citizen participation plan. We are required by law to, um, provide a detailed citizen participation plan that includes our policies and procedures for stakeholder consultation and public engagement. Uh, the revised citizen participation plan was completed in April of twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. So the next step was the resident survey. And to gather public input on priorities of C D B G funding, a resident survey was, uh, developed by the steering committee, and that same survey was used for the city of Bloomington and the Town of Normal. This, the survey collected basic demographic information and then also asked questions, uh, that was helpful in the needs assessment portion of the consolidated plan. The survey included multiple choice, ranking, and open-ended questions. Respondents could respond online or on paper. There were twenty-three drop-off locations where they could complete the survey, and fourteen of those locations were located within the city of Bloomington. Some of those locations included the Bloomington Housing Authority, Chestnut Health Services, Home Sweet Home Ministries, the City Hub, the Center for Human Services, and West Bloomington Revitalization Project, just to name a few. The survey was available in three languages, English, Spanish, and French. And the surveys were available to be completed from March, or from, I'm sorry, from April through September. Next slide, please. So how were the resident surveys marketed? Uh, there were a variety of ways that the survey was marketed, um, to get responses. Uh, the city, the Town of Normal, and regional planning staff attended a variety of community events from April through August. Uh, city staff alone attended twenty-three events. Some of these events included the Back-to-School Alliance Backpack Pickup, City County Health Fair, the Juneteenth Celebration, Pride Fest, Coffee with a Cop, and multiple downtown farmers markets. Uh, we also did social media posts on the various social media channels of the city. We did paid social media advertisement specifically to the six one seven oh one zip code. We also did flyer distribution, media coverage for G L T and the Panograph. And we also did mailings to, um, individuals that live in public housing, as well as those that receive housing choice vouchers. We did postcard mailings to residents who live in low-income housing task, tax credit properties. And then staff also attended piecemeal lunches at Wood Hill and Phoenix Towers. Next slide, please. So aside from the resident, or aside from the surveys, staff also did seven focus groups to get additional insights from service providers on the needs that they're, um, the people they serve would need, uh, how a C D B G funding could be used to address those needs. Those seven groups included homeless and housing nonprofit providers, infrastructure and climate resiliency, lenders, developers, realtors, social service and healthcare providers, uh, major employers, uh, rental owners, and college students. Next slide, please. Uh, the city also, um, held public forums. Uh, the city and the Town of Normal each held their own individual public forum and then jointly did a virtual forum. The public forum provided staff an opportunity to give the public an overview of C D B G, its basic requirements and program eligibility, and answer any questions regarding C D B G. During the public, uh, in-person forum, the participants were even able to do a hands-on activity where they were given sticker dots. Um, they received three blue dots for public service, because that is limited to a fifteen percent cap. And then they received thirteen red dots where they could, um, allocate those resources for housing, public facility, and infrastructure needs. Next slide, please. So after the resident surveys and the public events, um, staff also held focus groups. Uh, there were areas where the steering committee determined that there was additional information needed and some additional clarification. So complete, um, staff completed interviews with key informants from information technology, public transportation, and child care. Next slide, please. So next, we'll move into, um, some of the demographic information of the respondents. Um, as you can see from here, um, those that responded, uh, the city was able to get over fourteen hundred, uh, responses compared to the seven seventy-four that we received for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four consolidated plan. As you can see here, the majority of respondents, uh, indicated that they do own their home, about twenty-six percent reside in rental units. We were able to get a good, um, group, uh, section of, uh, age respondents, uh, throughout the community. Um, good breakdown of that, we did get responses pretty much from all age groups within the community. Next slide, please. So here you can see the education breakdown of the respondents, as well as, uh, race for the respondents, what we received. About seventy-one percent were white, about ten percent African-American, about five percent Asian. And that's very comparable to, um, really the demographic information of the community based on the twenty twenty census data. So we really did get a good, um, response, um, across all demographics. Next slide, please. So here you can see, um, gender of the responses, and then also time lived in the community. And once again, we did get a really good, um, full group of, of individuals living in the community, everything from less than two years to individuals born and raised, to people that have been here for more than twenty-five years. Next slide, please. So in the resident survey key questions, uh, one of the questions was in regards to being able to find adequate housing. Seventy-four percent responded that they are able to find adequate housing, twenty-six percent responded that they, um, are not able to find adequate housing. Ability to cover household expenses in emergency situations, that was almost about a fifty-fifty split with fifty-five percent for saying that they could afford emergency household expenses and forty-five indicating that no, they could not. Next slide, please. So of those, um, surveyed, they were also asked if their current housing was in need of repairs. This was almost about a fifty-fifty split as well, forty-four percent indicating no, that their home did not need repairs, but fifty-six percent did indicate that their home was in need of repairs. And then we asked about the severity of those repairs. Uh, minor and moderate were pretty close, um, with about eleven percent indicating that they have substantial repairs needed, um, in their home. Next slide, please. So the resident survey non-public service priorities, we've provided the top eight here. Um, as you can see, street sidewalk improvement, homeless facility shelters, and housing rehabilitation, uh, were in those top three. Next slide, please. And then for public service priorities, once again, top eight results here. Uh, mental health services, homeless services, and fair housing services being those top three of that, that group. Next slide, please. So resident, or the respondents were also asked what specific areas should be targeted for revitalization. As you can see here, the majority indicated West Bloomington, with downtown, um, coming right in under that with about twenty percent of respondents. You can see, you'll see on here that there are some, um, areas indicated were actually in Normal. And so even though we, we were asking for areas of Bloomington, some respondents did provide locations within Normal. Next slide, please. So data analysis and the priority selection, uh, regional planning, Town of Normal and city staff used a very similar methodology that was used for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four consolidated plan. Uh, one key difference was that rather than doing the stakeholder surveys we did with the last consolidated plan, we actually did focus groups, um, to have more detailed, um, conversations and having those face-to-face interactions. So that was one change this year. Um, each activity was then scored on a four-point scale based on the following categories: dependence, intent, effectiveness, resident survey results, resident survey results for low-income respondents, focus results, and public forum results. Next slide, please. So when looking at dependence, we're looking at how dependent the activities are on C D B G funding. Um, are there other funding sources available for that activity? The intent, does the activity align with the intent of the C D B G program? Does the activity align with the city's comprehensive plan? We are also looking at the regional housing recovery plan. And then for effectiveness, we're looking at how substantial of an impact would the C G, C D B G funding make on any activity? Then once again, also including those resident survey results, the resident survey results for the low-income respondents, focus group, and public meeting results. Next slide, please. So each category was scored on a four-point scale using the mean average. And then activities were then sorted into high, medium, and low priority based on their mean score. Next slide, please. So for the public service activity, high and medium priorities, um, homeless services and fair housing were the two high priorities, medium priorities included childcare, mental health, senior services, youth services, disability services, job training, and transportation services. Next slide, please. And then for the non-public service activity, high and medium priorities, the high priorities for these areas were housing rehabilitation, sidewalks improvements, homeless facilities and shelters, and street improvements. Medium priorities were accessibility improvements, demolition of dilapidated structures, public parks, trails, and open spaces, water and sewer improvements, community recreation center, and bus facility improvements. Next slide, please. So from those results, the preliminary twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine C D B G consolidated plan goals include preservation of existing affordable housing stock, which includes the homeowner housing rehabilitation, accessibility improvements, water and sewer installation for new affordable housing units, such as those that are built for, with Habitat for Humanity, elimination of slum and blight conditions, demolition of vacant and abandoned properties, and supporting the provision of the public service activities, which once again, we are subject to that fifteen percent cap. Next slide, please. The preliminary plan goals also include public facility improvements, such as parks, bus facilities, and nonprofit providers, public infrastructure improvements, sidewalk and street, which really the priority lying on that sidewalk improvements that we really heard through the public input. And then infrastructure improvements to support affordable housing development. And then finally, administering C D B G effectively and proficiently. Uh, we are required by federal regulations to further fair housing, section three training, and, um, just meeting general administration requirements. Next slide, please. So the public facility improvements, public infrastructure, public service, and administrative service are subject to a competitive application process. Each year, the city releases an R F P for those service projects, and applications are evaluated using a common scoring system. Next slide, please. And so timeline for next steps are that the, um, applications for those, uh, for that competitive process would open on November twenty-first. The applications would close January third. The consolidated plan, annual action plan, public comment period would begin January twenty-third. The public hearing would be held on February tenth. The public comment period would end February twenty-third, and then the annual action plan and consolidated plan would be submitted on the due date to HUD by March seventeen. I just also want to note here that the housing rehabilitation program is an ongoing application process, and there are currently fifteen people on the waiting list for that program that we were not able to fund this last year. not able to fund this last year. Next slide, please. With that, I will open it for questions.
Questions? Councilor Ward?
Thank you for that. That was really helpful. I do have a couple of questions. There was a slide early on that showed the breakdown of the respondents by their housing. Can you give me a sense of whether that is, is in line with the demographics of the community or, or did it just so happen that it broke down that way for the respondents? Is that a cross-section of our community?
That I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look at, I did not pull that from the census data, so I'd have to go back and look at that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested to know that.
Yeah.
And similarly with the ages. But I think you may have touched on this at the very end. Did you use up all of the, the money that you received last year? Was there any money left over last year?
For housing rehabilitation or for any of the other activities? I think we still have some activities that are outstanding because they're construction projects, so they might have been.
It's all dedicated to something.
Yes, everything has been allocated and everything at this point in time is on track.
And I thought you said there was some kind of waiting list.
There's 15.
So you could, you could.
Housing rehabilitation.
You could do more if you had more money, right?
Yes.
Okay. And is it a guarantee that you'll get this amount of money next year, for example?
No. No, it is, I mean, they, they, we're usually at about the same amount, but it is subject to HUD and, and how they're evaluating our need.
And is there anything in our city code that would prevent us from using general funds for this, for these needs?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, let's see, seeing none, so thank you very much for this presentation. And thank you, William, as well.
Thank you. And we'll follow up with that, Molly, answers to that. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is item B, a consideration, 8B, consideration action on approving the 2024 tax levy estimate for the city of Bloomington as requested by the finance department. And I'm gonna turn it over to city manager Jeff Jorgens and just want to say before that, you know, to Scott and staff, thank you very much for all the work that you, you put together. I know around this time it gets pretty busy and it's, it's, it's good for you to, you know, to lay out, you know, what the options are that we, we have and consider. So thank you very much for all of that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And this is maybe not the favorite time of year for us at administration of finance. And I know the property tax levy is a certainly a, can be a difficult topic and a controversial topic. So this is my first time as city manager going through the property tax levy process. Scott and I are going to tag-team this a little bit. We're going to try a little bit of a different approach. We're going to tie in because there are some budgetary issues associated with this with the forecasting. We're going to highlight some of those. We're going to try and give a little bit more history than maybe what we've shown in the past and do a little bit more forecasting. But at the end of the day, we will have a staff recommendation, but we will also outline other options obviously that the council has. I'm going to start by asking Scott to go through what the, what the assessment was and what we're predicting the rating, the rate to be with the EAV.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, council, community. There's a lot of discussion about the assessed values that have been issued or are pending issuance. So the EAV equalizes assessed value is, it factors in how do we process and look at the levy? The levy ask over the, the EAV, which is basically the value of the property base dictates the rate, and so that's part of our discussion point. So what is EAV? It's basically one-third of the market value, but what is the market value? So market value is determined, you know, there's the township assessor is assessing homes and businesses and properties within the community, but ultimately it's the county assessor who equalizes the value kind of of the area and that's kind of dictated. I, I won't claim to know exactly how it works, but using state mandated calculations to create kind of a, an even equalized value based on recent sales that have gone in through the Department of Revenue that they're, they're recording. So the county assessor has provided us, the city, the preliminary EAV for the city. We got that on October 11th of 2024. We're direct, direct your attention to the lower left corner of this slide. So the initial EAV reported was roughly about $2.5 billion, and that's a $236 million increase over the prior year, about 10.51%. However, historically, we've, we've noted that there are adjustments that, that come into play before the final EAV is set. Those are challenges. There was a multiplier applied to the whole property base by the county of 3.4%. We know certain properties within the system that multipliers applied to it, but they are frozen due to abatements, et cetera, agreements with the city and county and taxing districts. So I, we apply typically a haircut. This year it's a little larger than normal. It's $15 million to account for those adjustments. If we don't do that and we're, and we're basing our estimate on a higher value, we're going to under-calculate or underestimate our rate. So using a $15 million haircut, we're looking at $2.469 billion, moving up to the 2024 line in the, in the historical table there that shows a $221 million increase, about a 9.84% total EAV increase over prior year. The reporting that we get from the county shows that about $12 million of that E, of that increase is related to new construction. And over in the right column, that's about 5.47%. Next slide, please. So the city levy, as everyone knows, is just a portion of the total levy for the area. The total for the area last year was, was roughly about 8.4%. You're going to see another slide here for, for unit five, but they were, they were the same at 2023. So the city is point, was 0.993% for its rate. So going down to the, the dollar bill, which shows kind of the allocation on a cents basis, but this is also a percentage basis. The city was about 12% or 12 cents on the dollar of that total overlapping rate for the area. District 87 and unit five both at 62%. So they're the, kind of the primary drivers of, of the rate for the area. Next slide, please.
And wanted to just go over the tax levy in general. Others, I think a misconception that the levy for the city is just one big giant dollar amount. Really, it's broken into several different levies. So when we set the levy estimate, we set the levy, we're actually putting money into separate categories. And so wanted to just point that out. And this is, for example, what we did in '23, and all of the different categories added up to the 22.3 million. And, you know, we'll talk a lot about pensions tonight. When a, a, a money is levied, a tax is levied and it goes into a specific category, like, for example, police pension, it has to by law be spent on police pensions. So just wanted to point that out. Wanted to show a couple of historical graphs tonight as well. This shows the tax levy rate, not the levy amount, but the tax levy rate going back to, and I can't see my, 1998. And you can see that, you know, back to, you know, when we started this, the rate was, was higher. It did dip down in about 2001 or 2, and it held steady, steady for several years until going back up in about 2008. And it has held steady really, you know, give or take a little bit for the last 10 years really. And then last year, as the council knows, you took the rate down a little bit to the 0.99%. When we look at the actual levy amount, not the levy rate, but the actual dollar amount that we're levying, this trend shows from 2014, so about the last 10 years, how much money the city's been levying every year. And it again is, you're not seeing huge fluctuations here. Obviously, it's, it's gone up a little bit in, in actual current dollar amounts, but when we switch that to constant dollars, you'll see that it's actually gone down a little bit. So the value for, for what we're getting obviously is, is gone down a little bit and there's been some dips there. Also wanted to, along that same line of inflation, we did a calculation to see how much in inflation we've had since 2011 compared to how much our levy has increased since that time. And so here you can see we've had about a 35% increase in inflation and about a 17% increase in our levy since 2011 compared to 2023. Again, just to visualize that our, our levy amount has not necessarily kept up with inflation. Want to again get back to the specific tax levy and the estimate or the, the proposal that staff is going to recommend. And again, we're going to focus on the pension line items, and those are the two I've got highlighted there, have been levying about 4.8 and 4.7. And we're specifically talking about the public safety pensions, the fire pension, and the police pension. And I'll turn it back over to Scott to talk a little bit about our pension contributions and how we've been funding those and where were the information we have on that.
Thank you, city manager Jorgens. In, in 2013, the city adopted a policy targeting 100% funding by 2040 for the public safety pensions. By our code, we are to engage a licensed actuary annually to calculate our contribution amount to, to achieve that goal. The actuaries take into account census information related to the members and retirees, you know, if they're married, children, age, they, they take into account pay levels, mortality tables, et cetera. In, in FY 2025, for this current fiscal year, there was a $2.4 million increase over the prior year, and that got us to that $14.7 million. Our code, and I'll put it in these terms, our code requires that we restrict certain revenues. City manager was mentioning related to the tables. So our restricted revenues are property tax and the increase in utility tax. There was an increase in utility tax that was approved in 2014 calendar year. I think it went into effect FY, for FY 2016. But regardless, those restricted revenues for this year are shown under the funding source table there. $9.6 million for property tax, $2.1 million related to the utility tax increase. And, and that, that amount is, has, has gone down over the recent years due to the telecom component. And then somewhere along the line, there was a small portion of replacement tax that was inserted for $10,000. So our, our restricted revenues versus the $14.7 million are about $3 million short for FY 25. And, you know, we are, the city is committed to adhering to that, that 100% funding policy and, and making the contribution as required, as calculated by the actuaries. So we are making that up from other general fund revenues such as sales taxes, et cetera. And that we do have visibility now that the funding reports have been completed by the actuaries. They use the, the final audits from the pension funds and also the census data to do their calculation. So we have visibility on the coming fiscal year's requirement, and it has gone up roughly $1 million to 15.7 million. So if we utilize the same restricted revenue sources, the $9.6 million for the levy, utility tax, 2.1, and 10,000 for replacement tax, the shortfall related to restricted revenues would be approximately $4 million.
That said, turning to some of the options for the council to consider tonight. One option, and we'll get to this in a second, is to increase the tax rate to help cover the pensions and to add about $4 million to our levy. That would be a tax rate of about 1.066. That we'll, we'll see in a second, so higher than last year, about 0.07, but lower than, than the previous several past years. Another option is to go back to the 2024 rate, which the council approved last year at 0.99. That would add about $2.2 million. And again, all of this would be restricted to the pensions. And then the historic rate, which was before last year of 1.089, that would add about 4.56 to the, to the pensions and to the levy. Staff is not recommending we go back up that high. One of the things we'll talk about tonight is we're committed to finding other cuts and finding other savings and not putting all of this on the, on the back of the taxpayers. And then final option, and there are many other options, but these are the options that we think the council would be most interested in, is a flat levy. And this means a flat dollar amount. So last year, we levied $22,320. If we kept at that amount, the levy rate would go down to 0.904. Again, the staff recommendation is to, to go to the 1.06. And if you look at the chart, this again would take the rate back up to, you know, last year we went down, this would take it back up, but not as high as where we were for really the past nine or 10 years. Wanted to show what the impact of this would be. And, you know, and, and some of the materials in the past, we've used $165,000 home. We think that's getting a little dated. Maybe the 200,000 number is getting dated as well, but we use that number for an apples to apples comparison. If your home was valued at $200,000 last year and it's going to be valued at $200,000 again, you know, in the next year, that's about a $4 a month increase in the property tax levy or about $48 annually. Now, we know that if your home was valued at $200,000 last year, the, it's been increased in its value. And so really a better comparison is more likely, well, what's my home valued now? It was 200,000 last year. We used a 9% number, which we thought was probably fair. That means your home's going to be valued about 218,000. And that means your tax increase is really going to go up about $112 a year or about a little under $10 a month if we, if the council approved the 1.066 rate. Just to give kind of a full picture, again, putting focus on the, on the pension numbers here, that would increase both of those line items by $2 million. So we'd get to about 2.6 million for both of those and add about a 4, $4 million add. If, and we'll talk about the library, you'll set the library tax levy next. If, if the council approved the staff recommended city rate and approved the, the levy rate, there would be a, about a 0.05 increase in the actual rate for the combined rates. Want to talk just a little bit about some, a lot of the conversations we've been having as staff about, you know, what is the value that's added to the taxpayers and, and what's the cost for that value? Obviously, we want to be in a position where we're providing great services and a high value to the taxpayers, but at a low cost. And so want to talk just a little bit about that tonight. And before I do that, let's first talk about the cost and specifically the tax dollar. This is a new graph we're, we're showing this year, which is actually shows of the tax dollar, property tax dollar that is paid to the city, where does that money go? And Scott, you want to walk us through that?
Sure, it's fairly self-explanatory and the dollar amounts were depicted on the, on the tables that we just reviewed. But we were highlighting pensions this evening, so that's one of the angles I'm taking here. So this, as, as the city manager mentioned, this depicts the levy allocation by category. Now, police and fire, you can see the police pension is 21% or 22.1 cents, fires 22. So that's 43% of the total levy currently as it stands is for the public safety pensions. If you add in the public safety protection, so you see fire protection is 0.09, a police protection 0.07, that gets it up to about 58%. So when you add those two together, $13 million of, of the total levy amount is, is dedicated to public safety. And just, just highlighting, you know, the importance, you know, that the city's placing on public safety, the, the FY 25 operating budget for public safety for toll, for police and fire is 51.7 million. The pensions is 14.8. So the total public safety budget for FY 25, including operations and pensions, is 66.5 million, and that's roughly 47% of our total general fund operating budget.
So again, so Scott's kind of outlined where the money's going, some of the costs. What, what's some of the value and what, what are some of the things that we're experiencing in the city? First, want to talk about, you know, this is data from 2023, you know, over 68,000 calls for service for PD, almost 47 calls for service from the fire department. Very, as Scott mentioned, very big budgets in our, in our police and fire. And the one thing I want to add here is that, again, compared to a lot of cities our size, we live in a very safe community. We take a, a lot of pride in that. We want to maintain that safety. And so we're, we're very proud of our police and our fire department. But these are dramatic numbers, the calls for service, you know, to almost one call per resident. And, you know, for the fire, you know, almost one call per two residents. Again, those are dramatic numbers, and these are the kind of services that, you know, don't, you don't need until you need them. And when you do need them, you need them to be there. And again, you know, we're extremely proud of what we're able to do in this community with our fire and our police departments. Want to talk about our streets, you know? We maintain, I think this is, this is an amazing statistic, but 842 lane miles, that's beyond the distance between Chicago and St. That's beyond the distance between Chicago and St. Louis of roads that we're maintaining in the city. Takes a lot of money, takes a lot of revenue. Again, we're trying to do different ways to approach that and to maintain those. But everything from removing snow to repairing potholes, to traffic engineering, a lot of different things we're doing there, as well as community development, 1,600, over 1,600 permits that were issued last year in 2023. And economic development, a tremendous amount of business contacts and other work they're doing in that area. Talk about parks and quality of place within the city. A couple of numbers that really stand out on this is 42 parks that we maintain, 163 acres. That and then another 132 acres of of native prairie, 225 acres of of right of way. But again, you know, we have three golf courses, we have two pools, a zoo, an ice rink. A lot of amenities that we offer the residents and and that costs money. We also have two entertainment facilities that we all know also cost money and as an expense, including the arena and the BCPA. We have a lot of people taking advantage of those amenities. We're trying to figure out how to cut those operating costs at both the arena and the BCPA. We're working on that. And we think we're making progress. But again, a lot of amenities that are provided in that area as well. So again, that's the value. Again, back to the cost, how do we compare? And when you, this is based on the 2023 tax levy. But when you compare us to other communities in the area, I would say we do very well. If we're not the lowest, we're usually near the lowest. Some communities, you know, might be a little artificially low. When you look at Springfield and and their rate is, you know, 0.95 or 9.3. But then when you start to add in the park district that they have and the transit district and the others, their rate jumps up significantly to to 1.5 or so. So our rates are very competitive compared to other communities. So at the end of the day, I would argue we're we're providing a lot of services, we're providing a lot of value at at a good cost. But again, it it all plays into it together. Again, at the at the beginning of this presentation, said we were going to start to introduce a few budgetary issues, which we don't normally do when we talk about the tax levy, but we think it's important to to do that tonight, to give the community and the council some visibility on a few issues that we're projecting and that we've got visibility on. The first is that the grocery tax is being eliminated as of January 1, 2026. For FY 26, because it'll be a partial year, that'll be a $750,000 decline in revenue. And in FY 27, when it's a full year, we're projecting that that to be about a $3 million loss in revenue. So revenue's going down there, and then we've got increased cost coming in this other slide, which there's a lot of words up there, and I'll try and describe it this way. We have budgeted what we call vacancy savings. So we budget a lot of different police positions, fire positions that we know historically we've not been able to fill. Well, based on changes we've made, so we're now able to hire more firefighters and our police recruitment has been improved. We're starting to see that vacancy savings go down. And what that means is our expenses for those employees are going up. So where we had been budgeting about $2 million or able to count on about $2 million in savings, we're no longer able to count on that. So again, the revenues are going down from the 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 grocery tax, and then they're going up from some of the the police and fire and other employees that we've we've got now able to hire. Real quick, what does all this mean? It means in FY 26, we're projecting, we've got visibility on about a $3.7 million deficit. In FY 27, because that'll be the full year of the grocery tax, we're projecting about a $6 million deficit. And that's just what we have visibility on. We know other costs are rising, projects are coming in well over budget as inflation continues and we see other rising costs. So we expect that we're going to probably have to cut more and find more than this. But that's at least what we've got visibility on, and that's what our current projections are. That does not include other upcoming operational expenses that we have and projects that we need to do, including the Public Works Campus at Owens Nursery, improvements to there, the new fleet building that we've talked about. We also have the Market Street Garage and adding the parking there and or down, you know, in other locations downtown that we have to do. We have police space needs. As the council is aware, we've we had a some studies done. Police basically needs to maybe not quite double their current square footage. So we're trying to figure out how to address those needs. And then we've also talked about another fire station need. So in addition to the projected deficits, we've got other needs that we need to address and we need to find revenues for. So how are we going to do this is the big question? Well, we're already starting. Scott and I have had conversations with all the directors. We're already preparing for this. Like I said at the initial onset of this, we're not planning to put all of this on the on the shoulders of the taxpayers. And we we've engaged in a couple of different things. One, we're exploring different ways to identify savings. We're evaluating different variables that could influence future budgets. We are going to take a much more conservative approach to our FY 26 budget. Again, that won't be rolled out until early next year, but we are going to take a have to take a much more conservative approach to that. And just additionally, we're working on our continuous improvement initiative where we're trying to find efficiencies and reduce expenditures. So we're we're really trying to do a couple of a few different things. I also, any FTE requests that has come to me since my tenure as city manager have declined, not adding any new FTEs, at least from the general fund. And we are also looking at a a, you know, no new FTEs in the next budget cycle as well. So we are, we are trying to hold the line on expenses everywhere we can. Next steps. Tonight, you will set the proposed tax levy. It is not actually the adoption of the tax levy. You are just setting the estimate. That tells us if we have to have a truth in taxation hearing. If you set the levy more than 4.9%, then we will have to have a truth in taxation hearing. We will have that on December 9. We will publish notice, we will advertise that, and we will have that public hearing on December 9. And then we will approve or vote on the tax levy on December 9 as well, following the public hearing. Just again, trying to provide the options here. The, you know, highlighted on the yellow there. If there's a desire to increase the levy to address the pension costs and to put those directly into the pension funds, that's a $26,320,384 levy. And it it goes from there. If you want to hold the rate from what you did last year, if you want to go back up to the historic rate, or if you want a flat levy, meaning that the levy amount is the same as last year, that would decrease the rate to 0.904. And the and the levy rate would be 22,32384. So we will be looking for, after any discussion or or anything else, a motion to set the levy at whatever amount the council desires to do so tonight. With that, we are happy to answer any questions. You guys, we have the easy part, you guys have the hard part.
Okay, so questions, Councilmember Ward? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Montney.
So, thank you. And Scott, I really appreciate the details that you've gone to, and I appreciate your staff helping with some questions that I had last week. So I appreciate that very much. I I think when we talk about the property tax levy isolated, it paints a picture. But when you talk about that property tax levy in the context of all of the other revenue sources we have, you come to a completely different conclusion, at least that's my belief. So when we're talking about what's on the table today, just looking at this last slide, you know, anywhere from staying flat to 4.56 million dollar increase. As I look at the budget process documents that are on the city's website, just from last year to this year, the revenues combined by sources, by source, last year, 290,134,570. The 2025 version that I printed out, 331,668,992. So when we're talking about can we afford to not take this tax increase, I think it's very important to place this in the context of all the other revenue sources that we have available to us. When we open this presentation with constant dollars and with the inflation rate that we've seen that was posted up there, that's our internal view. But envision how that has played out in the houses and the lives of the people across our community who don't have the opportunity to make decisions about a lineup of capital projects they want to do. Because they're like our public commenters tonight, having to face significantly increasing property taxes across all of the taxing bodies in McLean County. And when we talk about these numbers on average, that doesn't translate when you've got streets, particularly the moderate home price streets that are going up by 30 and 34% on their EAV increases just this year, which reflects statements that people have shown me and people that I've visited over these last few weeks. All of that, I think, is super important. I want to also come back and and, you know, again, Scott, as always, I'm trusting these numbers are right because they're numbers coming from from your area. But I think the context of the other revenue sources is extremely important. Next, I want to make a comment about the public safety pensions. In December of 2022, WGLT and several other news outlets reported on our levy increase that year. I believe the headline was Bloomington OKs more than 28 million combined property tax levies up 7% from the prior year. That property tax increase like this one today was predicated on the restricted funding sources for the police and fire pensions. However, it's my understanding as a home rule unit of government that we have a plethora of funding sources that we can look to to fund these pensions. During that season and during that time when those conversations were being discussed, the city will use the extra 1.4 million revenue to continue inching toward fully funding its police and fire pensions. Internally, I received a document request in response to some questions. Actually, in this case, it was sent to all of council from the prior city manager indicating that the police and fire will be made aware of the plan to fund an additional 7,000 to each fund in this process. However, what really happened, and that's happened for the last 10 years, at least as far back as I could see by looking at the police pension audit documents, the fire pension audit documents, our payments are whatever the actuarial prescribed amount is. So in fact, following that vote, where the majority of the council agreed to fund accordingly, the amount contributed to the pensions decreased by $500,000 both fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024. If I'm reading these numbers right, and I'm just looking to affirm that that's correct.
Yes, they did go down by those amounts.
Okay, so when we look at a cliff here presented at 2.4 million dollars, again, the context of the rest of what we've looked at tonight, the context of all of the work that you've done to educate us monthly about the revenue sources that we have, we have the money. We have the money. And it was really sobering to have the CBDG presentation earlier and to see through the eyes of our own residents their concerns about ability to stay in their home. I moved to Bloomington in 2001 from the state of California. On the exact same price house, my property taxes here at the time I relocated here are three times what I paid in California. So when we look at our contextual comparisons to Champaign, Decatur, Springfield, Peoria, that's not where our population is moving to. Our population is moving to places like Indiana and other locations where they can afford, particularly in retirement. That's what I'm hearing from my constituents, and that's what I'm seeing tracking demographic migration. So for that reason, I do not support the staff's recommendation to increase the levy.
Thank you. Are there other comments? No.
I have, I have a comment.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Nick, and then we'll go to Councilmember Crumpler.
And you always forget the remote people.
No, I did not. I was still thinking about you.
So a couple, couple facts here in this. And I think it is very, very important, it's been said by our public commentators in that, is that I think all of us support the great job that our public safety folks are doing and that we are committed to supporting them. And and I I do, I don't think it's intentionally ever a pitting, you know, pitting us against the pensions when we do this discussion, but it sometimes feels that way. So we have to watch that. I also do want to reiterate the the commendation for for the finance team. The numbers you provide are always excellent. The the data and the effort to streamline things and control costs and manage the numbers is fabulous. The unfortunate thing is sometimes it's not just about math. It's about people. And similar to Sheila, similar to our public commenters, the number of folks that I have talked to that are just in the boat, that they cannot take another dollar. And I I think we have to operate in some senses the way a business does. In my 30 plus years of of running departments and and various businesses, almost every year I've been told, no, you get no more money, figure out how to do it more efficiently. And I I know the team is doing a great job trying to do that. It's not a criticism or anything against any of the staff. It's just the fact is sometimes just because there's value, just because, you know, we want to pay for certain things, doesn't mean that the money has to come from the taxpayer. We have to find other ways to do it. And I I'm in complete agreement with keeping the dollar amount flat. I know that that will cause challenges and a tough discussion next year too. But I think where we resolve some of this is with the next business that comes in and creates new incremental tax revenue that can help us with some of those things. And if we prioritize some of that type of effort, I believe we'll we'll have a better shot at at having an easier discussion going forward. Thanks.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Over and over again, constituents that I represent talk to me and emphasize the importance of community safety. It was the number one thing that came up when I was running, and it continues to be important today. And and I support this estimate so that the city can continue to meet its pensions to our Bloomington police officers and firefighters, because they are the people who put their lives on the line every day to make a difference in this community. And so I think the 4 million that would go directly into the fire and police pensions is important. And I support those who keep this community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin?
I just want, I want to remind the City of Bloomington residents that we have decided not to increase the grocery tax, which is going to have a dramatic effect on our revenue, almost equivalent to the 4 million that we're trying to put into the police and fire fund. I have a have an inclination to wait and see what this efficiency expert will produce. And then at that point, reevaluate should we reduce the rate or the levy next year. I think that considering the projections that you have given us, I have a, I'm inclined to approve what the staff is recommending. So I will make a motion to approve that.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Bowlin and then a second by Councilmember Crumpler. Are there other comments? Yeah, okay, let's see, Councilmember Hendricks and then Ward.
Yeah, I have gone back and forth with this topic. Last year, I thought we were in a better situation and a condition to slightly find that middle ground with the tax levy, and we opted, much to my, you know, I voted against, we opted to lower it. However, I have felt and I have heard the pressures that, you know, residents are having with increased costs. And we have, you know, increased costs with water, and we see some of the different taxing bodies. I kind of take the 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 different view that maybe this is the year that we can weather some of the storm, pay those pensions out of general fund and see where those efficiencies come through. pay those pensions out of general fund and see where those efficiencies come through for next year and kind of make that determination of what we do with the levy then. Um, because of kind of the back-to-back increase in the EAV that we've seen. But also adding to that, you know, I'm somebody who always strives to be as honest and realistic as possible, which is, you know, if we make this and then we don't see those efficiencies, we are going to have to make really difficult decisions. That is not going to make, you know, a lot of people happy, uh, and that we're going to have to, as the elected representatives, make those decisions, you know, because that's the position that we're in. Um, and that might look at cutting, that may look at like, uh, increasing the levy. But I think to just continue to, to flatten, 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 flatten every single year gets us in, also into a situation where we are at with the water rate, where we loved being up here on a podium, not us, people before us, who continue to say, oh, we're not going to increase, we're not going to increase, we're not going to increase. And then out of nowhere, we have to increase it by all these massive percentages. So we have to be able to weigh those two things. I would be more in favor of keeping flat this year and looking at those hard decisions next year. But I am also open to directions that my colleagues have to.
Good. Councilmember Hendrick, are you saying keeping, when you say keeping flies, are you talking about the rate or the, the, the dollar amount?
The dollar amount.
Dollar amount, okay. Councilmember Ward?
You get what you pay for. And ultimately, the money has to come from somewhere. I don't think there's anybody here who is against, um, our obligation to the people who keep us safe. And I certainly will not support anything that, that would prevent us as a city from keeping people, keeping our obligations to the people who keep us safe. I also think that we heard from, from, um, the presentation just prior that there are other needs out there besides single item needs. And so at some point, the money isn't there. And we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. And so, yes, these streams of money come from other places, but ultimately they come from taxpayers too. And so I think we're deluding ourselves to think that, oh, we can, we can, um, not put this on taxpayers simply by, by not dealing with property tax issues. Grocery taxes are regressive taxes that affect everybody, especially those who can't afford seven cans of whatever item. They have to pay for that even though they can't afford to own a house. And I think those things we have to take into account. So I will not support anything that takes away from our public safety. But I also think that at some point we have to address the fact that we can't keep putting this on the very people who would benefit frankly from, and the very neighborhoods that would benefit from us being able to spend those other streams of money for them.
Are there other comments? No? Okay. Well, I think we have a motion on the table, then we Oh, sorry. Yeah, I didn't see him.
That's okay.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't realize that he was.
It was a last minute thought here. Um, as I'm looking through this, um, this graph with the dollar amount and how it's divided up, now I want to remind everyone that it's not just the city that's taking a piece of the pie. There's also District eighty-seven, the county, um, the library, um, the NWRD, uh, airport township. And, you know, I, I feel this weight, this burden that falls on the city. And it's this tension between public safety with police and fire, which I don't think anybody will argue that that's important to the community and the people in this community. But at the same time, when the city chose to keep the levy flat last year, I believe District eighty-seven took the full amount. So that's the tension that I'm feeling is, you know, this responsibility on the city. But where does all the other, uh, organizations, where do they fall? And that's what I'm struggling with here a little bit. And you know, to put this on the people who are struggling to make ends meet, it's, it's not an easy decision. And I just wanted to kind of point that out.
Thank you. Are you ready to vote?
Yep, you should have your clickers.
Yeah, they do.
Wanted for clarification, right? We are voting on what the staff recommended. Is that correct?
Right, because you, yeah, your motion.
Yes.
You made the motion and then seconded it, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, so it looks like the nays have it. Right? Five against four?
No. So motion fails.
Okay. You need to say the nays?
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Motney, Councilmember Hendricks, Councilmember Danenberger, Councilmember Ward, and Councilmember Becker.
Okay, is there an alternate motion?
I'll make a motion to keep the EAV flat.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hendricks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Danenberger. And it is to set the the dollar number flat, right? Okay. Make sure everybody understands that.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Okay, so there are seven yeses and two nays.
Uh, the nays are Councilmember Bowlin and Councilmember Crumpler.
Okay. We are moving on to, um, the next item for the library levy. So this is item C, consideration and action on approving the two thousand twenty-four tax levy estimate for the Bloomington Public Library as requested by the Bloomington, uh, Public Library. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Jergens to introduce the item.
Thank you, and I'm going to go straight to Library Director Jeanne Hamilton, who will present the library's request.
Thank you, and I have with me today, uh, Board President Katrina Parker. Uh, you can go to the next slide. So the library, um, and the library board is requesting, um, a levy of, uh, six point eight million dollars. Um, this is a three point seven, six percent increase in the levy dollar amount, um, but it is a rate decrease. Next slide. So for a home valued at two hundred thousand dollars, um, they would pay, uh, ten dollars and eighty cents less, uh, per year. Um, and then if, uh, that home, uh, had an increase in the EAV, um, to two hundred eighteen thousand, uh, it would be five dollars and seventy-eight, uh, cents more per year. Next slide. Uh, so this slide just shows you a little bit of where the library expenses are allocated. Um, so as a service organization, um, the primary, uh, place that our budget goes towards is wages and benefits at sixty percent. Um, and then the second largest chunk is our bond repayment, um, for the building project. And then the third amount is, uh, our library collection. Um, and the next slide, please. Um, so, uh, I chose to show you, um, the last six months because the library opened, um, fully to the public in June. Um, so I felt like six months was the, the, um, best picture of how the library is being used right now. Um, and so we, we do have a lot of people coming in the door. We're seeing a huge increase in all of, um, our usage, uh, over the last, um, same period last year. And, and so we're seeing a, a large increase in the number of items that are checked out by people. Um, a lot of people are coming and participating in the free programs and activities that we offer at the library. Um, and people are relying on our new spaces as well, our study room and community use. Um, it's a one thousand two hundred fifty-eight percent increase in our use, uh, last year. We did have less rooms, um, but we are seeing a huge, um, use of those rooms. Um, and next slide, please. And so comparing to other, uh, comparable cities, uh, we are the lowest tax rate for the libraries in, um, the central Illinois area of cities of like sizes. Um, and we are the second lowest average cost per household as well. Next slide. Um, so then just wanting to remind you, uh, these are the same, uh, dollars that Scott just showed. Um, but the library is four percent of the property tax bill for both, uh, District eighty-seven households and Unit Five households. Next slide is Unit Five. And then, um, the next slide, uh, is again, uh, a duplicate of what Scott and Jeff presented, um, that we have the same timeline of setting the proposed tax levy, uh, publishing a notice. Our proposal does not require a truth and taxation public hearing, um, but it would require an adoption of the final tax levy on December ninth as well. And then the next slide is questions.
Oh, Councilmember Hendricks?
I would make a motion to approve.
A motion by Councilmember Hendricks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Danenberger. Discussion, questions?
I do have a question. I, I noticed on the dollar slicing that the percentage allocated to the library has moved from three percent to four percent. Um, could you share, what is the amount of the aggregated increases in the last five years? I believe last year we were told in, in the, it, it was approaching thirty or exceeding thirty. Um, I'm just curious if the aggregate of those five years, if you could share that number with us.
Um, so it, it is a, the dollar figure, um, we are at three point five percent, so it rounded up. Um, so that's why you see us bump over. Um, and so are you, you speaking to the, the dollar, how much it's increased?
The levy, um, itself, um, the trend over that five-year horizon.
Sure. Um, well, I, I do feel like it, it is a little bit, um, um, misrepresentative because we did see a large increase in the two thousand twenty-one tax levy because that's when the bond was approved, so fourteen point two million dollar bond, uh, was approved at that time period. Um, and so, uh, if you could go back to slide two online, if that's possible, that will show, um, our, our dollar figures. So you see that jump, um, from twenty twenty, uh, to twenty twenty-one is when that bond, uh, took place. Um, and then, uh, we, we slowly took some increases over the years as well.
So in five years, we've gone from four point nine six seven million to six point eight two seven million for the library's, um, levy? If I'm, uh, reading that right?
So four point nine six seven, uh, million, yes, um, was in twenty twenty. And then, um, uh, in twenty twenty-four, you're seeing six point eight million. Um, but again, one million of that each year is the library expansion. And with us having a smaller, uh, amount, that percentage is going to look quite large um, because a, a million of that is dedicated to that bond repayment.
So it's still increased so over twenty, twenty-five percent, is that right? I, I, somebody who's better at calculating fractions in their head, if we're keeping the expansion, um, changes out of it and just looking at moving from four point nine to five point seven? You don't have to calculate it, that's okay. I think, you know, um, you, you heard a very sobering discussion about what we're hearing from our residents. Um, it, it's, um, very humbling. And I know that the library has had, uh, a really great year and, um, you know, a, a lot of people are very, um, you know, much enjoying the renovated facilities and all that that, uh, brought along to them from a value perspective. When do you see though this trend turning so that there is an opportunity to start to lower the overall operating cost? Um, and, you, you know, demonstrate that ability to not continue to see it inching up a handful of percent every, every year?
Sure, so the, the library has operated very lean over the years. Um, we've tried to be very good fiscal stewards. Um, and so what that also means though is then any, um, i- increases that we see with inflation, rising costs, um, then there's not much room to absorb that. Uh, so a, a flat levy or reducing the levy at all, um, would force cuts to what I would say are the variable areas of the budget. So when we're seeing utilities, that's a, we don't have much choice in the cost of utilities. Um, and we don't have, uh, much choice in the cost that, um, some of the goods that we have to purchase are. Um, so it's, it's really difficult for us to make, uh, cuts. So, um, I looked at what it would be, uh, to cut those. We would have to cut, um, programming, um, so those events and activities people are coming to, our collections and our staffing. Um, and so, uh, I would say that that's, um, it would be a disservice to the investment that we just made into the, the building that's in, um, that we just, uh, built for the community.
And I'm passing along this question because it was verbatim asked of, of me. And it relates to the collection. Um, I, I've had some folks come forward who asked, uh, about the ability to donate new books to the library that are current books that are on waiting lists for people to be able to check out. Um, and, um, it's, they, they were told, uh, evidently, um, so I'm getting this, you know, secondhand, um, that the library was unable to accept donations to increase the amount of books available for circulation here locally in our community. Is that the case?
Typically, what we do with donations, um, because they vary in, um, the, I mean, sometimes they get to us in a very used condition. So we typically put them in our book sale, and then we sell those, and those help offset the costs of, um, programming and, and are part of our budget.
And, and taking these ladies at their word, they were trying to donate new books. Um, so is there any, um, discussion about that when people are trying to donate books that are circulatable? Because they were told, just as you said, uh, that they could donate the book, but it would only go in the used book sale. And they were really trying to help, you know, be good citizens and, um, you know, try to, um, pay it forward and try and help alleviate some of the costs at the library and increase the circulation.
Sure, we could look at that, but I, um, it would take a lot of staff time. Um, so the staff would have to review the books, see if, um, we have it or not already. Um, look at whether there are existing wait lists on there, uh, and have we already purchased it? We can't return the materials once we've already processed them and have all our stickers on them. Um, so it, I mean, there would be a staff time, um, cost to that as well.
And last question, and this really just gets at the, um, salary and, and budget, which is obviously your, your largest category. Have you considered opportunities across the, um, City of Bloomington, other organi- um, other units of government to share resources when you're looking for? to share resources when you're looking for part-time staff? I mean, what comes to mind, for example, would be like part-time security or other things like that. Is there an opportunity to find any ways to mitigate costs through collaboration and sharing of resources?
We, I think that would be very difficult to do. We don't have, we utilize all of our staff hours that we have. So we do, we have several 15-hour week positions. And we have about 25% of our staff are 19-hour week positions. So we do, and then we use them fully. I think it'd be hard, it would again add staff time to collaborate with other departments and see who's available when, making sure that we aren't going over on, there's IMRF thresholds. If you go over a certain number of hours, you'll have to then budget for IMRF costs. So, and we, we have held vacancies before, like during construction when we had less space, we, we held vacancies and didn't fill those positions.
If that opportunity presented, would you be open to that? To looking at staffing a little bit more creatively?
I, we would be open to things, but I, I just don't know how that would be feasible. I think that would be, we'd have to train. Our, we're so different than many of the other areas of the city. So it would, I think it would be very challenging and it would cost much more in management time to try to work that out than it would be worthwhile. But we would be open to considering options.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler, can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
I support this request. I remember well the community excitement when the library reopened last summer after its renovations. The space was transformed. Our library needs to continue its work and role as a substantial resource for our community. The library is reducing its proposed levy rate calculations, 0.016%. This seems to me to be commensurate with inflation and shows sound fiscal management by Director Hamilton. And I urge you to think hard about the value of the library for this community.
Okay, thank you. I think we are ready to vote. We got a motion by councilmember Hendricks and then a second by councilmember Crumpler. Is that correct? Okay.
Danenberger.
Oh, Danenberger, sorry. Yes, yes. No, 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 Danenberger, yes. You guys almost look alike.
Councilmember Becker, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, the item passes. There are two nays to announce?
There's three nays. There is.
Oh, three, sorry.
Councilmember Motney, councilmember Becker, and councilmember Lee.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we gotta move on to the city manager's discussion.
All right, thank you again, Mayor and Council. First, just real quick, want to say thank you to Melissa Hahn and her team in relation to the, the program they presented tonight. I know they really took a lot of extra effort to get out there to different places in the community. And really appreciate that. We've gotten a lot of great feedback about the reorganization. And there's a lot of excitement within the community about what her and her team are going to be able to do to help revitalize our neighborhood. So just wanted to recognize that. Also, as I said, I know the discussion regarding the property tax is a difficult one. And I like a challenge. So you've given me a challenge tonight, which is great and fine. Scott and I have already been working hard on, on, you know, what comes next. And we'll continue working on that. And we will try to figure out how to, you know, make the changes with the least impact, you know, visible impact and the least impact that we can. And we'll be, as I said, either way, even if the levy was approved, we were still going to be facing a significant deficit. So we were already planning cuts and reductions. And we will, we will roll up our sleeves and, and figure out what that looks like and, and get that done for the city and the city council, again, in the least impactful way possible. Next slide. Again, it's leaf season. If you have any questions about leaves, please go to BloomingtonIllinois.gov backslash leaves. Last week, when I showed this slide, it was flipped. There was a lot more red. The red is the area of the community that they have not captured. The blue is the area that they've gone through once. And so they are making headway. Mo's doesn't want me to say this, but they might actually be a little bit ahead. He'll kill me for saying that, but they're, they're doing all right, given the weather that they've been presented with. It's, it's been difficult this season, a lot more so than last season. But they're making progress and continuing to pick up the leaves. Next slide. This is a little difference, I wanted to point this out. We have the Thanksgiving market that will this year be held at the BCPA. And it'll be held this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. There's over 50 vendors that will be there. It's gonna be a great event. It's the first time since the Bison are taking up the arena. It's the first time we've had it at a different location. So please catch this. It'll be at the BCPA and we know it'll be at a great event. Next slide. Finally tonight, want to end just with a quick update on the Bison. I'm not sure if anybody was at this game. During one of the quarters or break periods, they, they, every game, they have a contest to see if somebody can make the putt in a very tiny hole, or make the puck, not the putt, in a very tiny hole into the net. And they always do one for charity. And they do other, a couple of other people get to do it as well. And nobody ever wins, except last Saturday, when Buck Stevens, DJ from B104, got it in one of the holes and won a, I think, a year subscription to a gym. And then one of the youth hockey players made it in the center hole and won $50,000 for local youth hockey. So very exciting. Gonna show the video, which does not have audio, so it's a little anticlimactic. But this just goes to show, you know, how crazy of a hit that was. So I, so the, the crowd went wild. And truly, if you have not been to a Bison game yet, they put on a great event and encourage everybody to at least try it out. That's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Well, thank you. I was a little worried that you were gonna show my video, missing it. So, but you know, that's great. I'm very happy for, for those who, who won, because I didn't make it and I'm not bitter or anything. But yeah, I also want to reiterate something that Jeff has said, I think, because it bears repeating. But the, the reorganization of Economic Development Department has been very well received in the community. And I've heard a lot of very good comments about that. So I'm definitely looking forward to what comes next and, and how we can better serve the community. And, and also on the, on the tax levy, I just wanted to remind everyone, you know, although the, the levy is gonna be flat at this point, the estimate, but we are still committed to public safety pensions. So that's something that, you know, we're gonna make happen just because it's in the code. So just want to make sure everybody knows that. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to councilmembers to see if there's any comments. Okay, it looks like everybody's ready to go home. So, well, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by councilmember Bowlin, second. Councilmember Danenberger. Okay, all right. Okay, all those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye. Aye, okay, we are adjourned and we'll see you next Monday. Thank you, Councilmember Becker.